Followed by three moments of silence. Melissa, would you please in the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. I always like that look in people's eyes when I call on them.
You should be used to it by now if you've been here enough times that it's so random.
Uh, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Can I steal a little?
Here.
Here. Here. Um, all notes that we are being live streamed right now is being broadcast out through our YouTube channel for public consumption. Um, we're also being recorded internally for our purposes and compiling the minutes. And for that reason, um, if anybody has any, any business before the board, I ask that they come up and speak into that microphone um, to make sure uh, that we pick it up internally. Uh, row officer reports and comments. Um, Melissa, anything from the treasurer's office about the new offense already on the agenda?
No.
All right, Tracy, anything from the court? I'm not, you could really row office, but I'll have to be part of the courts.
No.
Thank you. Uh, public comments, any member of the public which you may call. And, and if there are any members out there watching via YouTube, as I always say, um, if you want to make comment but don't, don't want to or unable to come into the courthouse um, to attend this meeting, you can submit your comments at envoy@LawrenceCountyPA.gov. That's envoy@LawrenceCountyPA.gov. Please do the subject by a public comment. Um, before we, we really get rolling here, we have a, um, a resolution that we'll be voting on later um, to change the employee handbook. Um, it's not in the agenda, um, but we consulted with our, our solicitor to make sure that we're on, on legal ground of changes to sunshine law, um, to make sure that, that we'd be legal in admitting the agenda put in there. And Jason, if you'd be willing to explain what, what, what the hell we have going on here.
Yes, I'm, I'm recommending an amendment to the current agenda to allow a resolution that would amend our current Lawrence County employees' policy handbook, specifically the policy involving the county's COVID-19 impol- policy for employees. This amendment would be de minimis in nature. It would fulfill the requirements of the new sunshine law changes. It's de minimis in nature. It does not involve any contractual relationship and there's no money being spent. This is simply, uh, changing our COVID policy to reflect the changes in the CDC guidelines.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments, uh, from the board? And again, we'll be voting on that later today.
No, I have to say, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate you being here and, uh, you did this with a good amount of expediency. Uh, Commissioner Boyd is gonna note later in the meeting, I guess I'm not noting now, but we don't have a public meeting next week, so we're not meeting for another two weeks. And, uh, time is of the essence on this matter, but we're, we're very cognizant of the, uh, of the new amendments that have been made to the Pennsylvania sunshine law. But the solicitor was kind enough to, uh, review those amendments. And his recommendation, I believe, as you heard him say, falls in line with allowing us to do what we need to do this morning. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, so leave Jason, is he gonna take off?
Thank you.
Yes.
And thanks for coming down. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to fiscal and contractual, we're no adverse articles, let's get down. We have one warrant register, um, from September ninth, 2021. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check that over and then take a motion to accept and file. Register.
Send them.
Be with you in just a second.
He's a slow reader.
Yeah. Usually by now I've looked at it. I'll second, uh, the motion.
I think your motion is second. There ain't further discussion here. Non-questional motion, all favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, next approval of a meeting minutes for Tuesday, September seventh. Again, I give my colleagues a minute to check those out and take a motion to approve the minutes or make any necessary speeding changes.
Send them.
Second, your motion is second. There ain't further discussion here. Non-questional motion, all favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Um, we have two written communications today. Maybe more if I flip the page. Nope, still. Um, one is from Pennsylvania American Water relating to a GP 11 maintenance testing, repair, rehab, or replacement of water obstruction and encroachments permit um, for a stream crossing repair at Shenango, uh, Shenango River at West Washington Street. And I'll just read the first part of this. It's for, their county commissioners is for the requirements of general permanent registration letters to inform you of the applications for coverage for GP 11 maintenance testing, repair, rehabilitation, replacement of water obstruction and encroachments with Pennsylvania DEP is proud to complete the repair of an eight-inch cast iron water main um, within the Shenango River, uh, near the intersection of West Washington Street and the Columbus Interbelt.
Thank you. Question?
I think he stole your signature.
He had one more, one more little flair to it.
What do you like, Loretta?
I'd love to look at that again.
Not Mike Morgan.
Mm-hmm.
It tells you, it tells you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ben Sino on the office.
Bobby Cat.
Yeah, every once in a while, when I'm, I'm going to pay the, for the check at a restaurant, I'll actually put a smiley face where the, uh, where the signature line is. Um, our second is from National Fuel Supply Corporation. Um, notice read, dear county commissioners, this municipal notice on the requirements of Act 14 is to inform you that natural, uh, national fuel gas distribution corporation is applying for DEP general permit 11 uh, for the crossing stream for access on an existing gas pipeline right away. Uh, notification also serves to inform you that NFJ will be obtaining any and all the required permits for stream retland, wetland encroachments for the planned development as required by PABEP under Pennsylvania Code, uh, Title 25, Thermal Protection, Chapter 105, dam safety and water management. Um, and this project is taking place in Perry Township. Um, across an unnamed tributary, um, to, uh, to Slippery Rock, two annos, I don't know what comes with the door, will be installed without floodway. Uh, total terror, uh, temporary impacts are approximately, uh, three hundred fifty nine square feet. As I always try to note, uh, the commissioners have no approval authority over these permits. We're just required, understand, a lot of the inform, informed of different permit applications uh, by entities who are applying for this permits. At the end of the day, in both of these cases, DEP has final authority. Any questions, comments on the, uh, the written communications?
Yeah.
No, sir. I'll take a motion to accept and file.
Send them.
Second.
Your motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing non-questional motion, all favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Staff, of course. Do we have any member of staff here that has anything? I guess you don't really have the, that's Vanessa, you have anyone?
Vanessa.
All right, we're good to go. Good shape. Uh, Dan, you have a four first for commissioner reports and comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items. The document that we're gonna be acting on later, the, the solicitor referenced, I'm assuming that our intent will be at the conclusion of the meeting if it hasn't been done so already, but we probably didn't have time. We should probably post this on the website, I would imagine, along with everything else that we posted.
Sure, we can do it.
Thank you. Couple things. Uh, I want to offer on behalf of the board, our sympathy to, uh, Jan Marshall, uh, who is the township secretary in Perry Township. Uh, her husband, uh, Leland passed away last week. Nice, nice gentleman. And, and Jan, uh, does a lot for not only Perry Township, but she's very active in the Township Officials Association here in the county. So our sympathy to her. Uh, secondly, uh, I had the privilege on Saturday of participating in a, uh, brief ceremony, uh, in recognition and remembrance of nine eleven. This was held at Westminster College in New Wilmington. And, uh, I shared the podium with, with two gentlemen for whom I have a great deal to respect. Reverend Moore, who is the dean of the chapel or the, the lead minister at, at Westminster, and a retired college professor, Darwin Huey. Uh, I, I was a little, I wasn't sure if, bless you. Uh, I was not aware of any other ceremonies throughout the county. I wondered if any other, Debbie, did you know of any other?
I had not heard of any.
Okay. And, and the one at Westminster was basically more campus oriented. I don't know that they, uh, made a, a, a lot of, uh, college known about it, but I, I do want to make note, make note of the fact that, uh, there was at least one ceremony held, so I'm, I'm glad of that. And then finally, uh, I guess I'm getting into this habit now of asking a trivia question. So if you'll indulge me, but the winner will get two bucks. Uh, and since we've talked already this morning about Perry Township a couple times, the question involves the village of Wurtemberg. Now, Wurtemberg is unique because 488 run, the state route 488 runs through the Elwood Portersville Road. And if you're coming from Elport, you go into Perry Township, you cross the Slippery Rock Creek, you go into Wayne Township for a brief period of time. Then you cross the Slippery Rock Creek again and you're back in Perry Township. Now, in the village of Wurtemberg, there are two churches. One is the Wurtemberg Presbyterian Church, the other is the Wurtemberg Methodist Church. The question is, are both churches located in Perry Township? Are they both located in Wayne Township? Or is one in one and one in the other?
One in one and one in the other.
Sorry, Loretta.
Jeez.
Now it's a little process of elimination.
I'm saying, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say Wayne Township.
Win the two dollar bill.
Dang.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So Wayne, uh, Perry starts. How far?
Well, when you, 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 you.
I see, I see that sign, I just thought.
You know where, you know where the Perry School is?
Right.
Perry Elementary. You start in Perry Township, you get a little further and you cross the Slippery Rock Creek.
Right.
Then you're in.
Then Wayne.
Wayne. Now, uh, the Presbyterian Church, you'd have to make a quick left on the Wurtemberg Road and it's just slightly up the hill. That's the Presbyterian Church.
Yes.
Stay on 488, right at the bridge when you cross back into Perry Township on the left is the Wurtemberg Methodist Church. So they are both in Wayne Township.
It's another church there.
That's the, it's a monastery.
Transfiguration.
Transfiguration. And, uh, that's also in Wayne Township.
Darn, I thought it.
Well, it's easy to get confused down here.
Yeah, I thought it was sooner than that. So I said one of each. Hmm.
So.
Darn, darn.
Cool thing.
Shoo, I mean, I should have known.
Well, last week's question was about Elwood City, so next, or two weeks from now, I gotta think of something up north. Anyway, thank you.
I'll, I'll have to do my homework then.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I missed that shot. I'll never get the northern one.
You might.
I'll have to do some.
Well, if I'm getting the southern one, I think.
I know, that was a, that was.
Well, I could do a Mahoning Town one. That would, that would do an advantage, wouldn't it?
That would be good. That would be very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, couple things to that. Uh, first and foremost, I want to congratulate, uh, Dan. Um, we, we attended a banquet, uh, in Dan's honor. Um, when was that? Was that last Thursday? It was last Thursday.
Yes.
Dan was named, um, historical society, I want to say equivalent of person of the year award for his, for his contributions to the historical society and, and his dedication uh, to the preservation of history in Lawrence County. Um, he gave a phenomenal presentation on, uh, the si- a series of six murders. It was, it was six, right? Yes. Six murders that occurred, uh, back in nineteen thirties, um, as well as the, uh, district attorney from back then and some of the nuances of, of those cases. Um, prepared a great PowerPoint for it. Um, and.
The Felina family. Not me.
Oh, we were laughing, we were laughing. I remember where Loretta and I were talking to each other a week. Holy, holy, my God. And then I said, okay, that's a beautiful power.
He must have been working with Eric, you know?
No, Stephanie, Felina, and her daughters, they get the credit.
Um, but, uh, just congratulations, you've been well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you for being there. I appreciate your willingness. And Joe, thank you.
Absolutely. Second thing I want to mention, and I think, I thought this was interesting, is I pulled, um, you know, we, there's a lot of talk right now about the labor shortages right now taking place um, within Lawrence County and around the nation. Um, and so I pulled our unemployment rates from January of 2020, April of 2020, which was the peak of COVID-19, um, in term, from an unemployment perspective, and July of 2021. I found this to be interesting. Um, the unemployment rate before COVID-19, January of 2020, was 7.2%. Um, the unemployment rate in peak COVID-19 was 18.4%. Uh, and the current unemployment, uh, rate, my current, I mean, July of 2021, just because those are the most current numbers that I have when I pulled that data, uh, was 7.6%. And so, to that end, um, Lawrence, uh, Lawrence County's labor force has almost fully recovered, um, from the negative effects of COVID-19. We're down, um, just based on pure unemployment rate, we're down 157 workers, um, versus, if you'll indulge me for a second, I'll pull it up. My hand pulled up. Uh, versus a lot more in peak, uh, peak COVID, which was again in April of, of, of 2020. Uh, now, it'll be a while, um, before some additional statistics come out as, as to, uh, why uh, there are current labor shortages ongoing in Lawrence County. Um, it could be a variety of different reasons. It could be a drop in, uh, the labor force participation rate. Um, that's a very real possibility. In other words, uh, the unemployment rate is currently calculate, or our labor force is currently calculated as combined people who are employed and people who are considered unemployed. Um, but whenever somebody is, is classified as unemployed, that, that means that they are uh, both without a job and seeking a job. Uh, if they are without a job and not seeking a job, they are not counted, um, as part of labor force, um, for the purposes of computing unemployment. Um, it also could very well mean, uh, the employees who were, were laid off from more visible establishments, restaurants, retail, shops, um, et cetera. During the course of the pandemic, they found other jobs. And since there's only a finite amount of labor in our economy, uh, that's causing shortages now in restaurants, um, uh, retail establishments in other areas. That's a very real possibility. Other possibility is maybe they found other jobs, uh, from a global perspective. I mean, we learned during, throughout the course of COVID-19, um, that it's possible, very possible to telework. You can live in Lawrence County and, and show up to a meeting in Shanghai without issue.
Right.
Um, so time will tell. Um, you know, I, I'm looking forward to looking at, at aggregate income tax returns because that'll tell you if people are making more or less money in the aggregate. Um, uh, after COVID-19, which, which again gives credence to the theory that, that workers found higher paying jobs in other areas. It'll be interesting to see labor force participation rate figures come out over the course of the next couple of months. Um, but from a, from a labor, uh, a labor analysis, a labor economics standpoint, it's, it's a fascinating time, uh, to be digging into data. Um, and I'll note that this specific data relates unemployment was provided by the, uh, the Federal Reserve. Um, but I just found that to be interesting. And, and the last thing I'll mention, and Dan, Dan's slipping his notes, so I'll, I'll give Dan credit here for, uh, bringing it, uh, to my, my attention. Um, uh, but as, as of yesterday, yesterday was the final day for candidates, um, to file, or more accurately, parties to nominate individuals to file, um, for individuals to run for special elections. Um, and in our county comptroller's race, uh, only one party submitted a, a nominee to run in that special election. That's the Republican Party, the nomination of David Prestapine. Um, and so, uh, we're looking forward, uh, today at this point, carrying forward the election. Still actually asked to get, uh, formally elected. Um, but we're certainly looking forward to, to serving with him, um, going into the future.
I don't mean to muddy the waters. And I'll ask a question I truly don't know the answer to. Is there still time for someone to secure petition signatures to file as an independent? And I don't know the answer to that. Too bad Ed's not with us, but, uh, I, I, I'm wondering if that may not be the case because the, the ballots need to be printed here pretty shortly.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, this is my presumption. It's, it's based on fact, but I'm thinking in line with your thoughts insofar as the reason the deadline is what it was, was to allow us time to prepare and print the ballots.
Right.
Um, so to that end, I, I, my expectation would be with that following proof, that logic, as you said, um, this is that, yeah, because the clock is sure ticking.
Right.
I'll check this.
Tim or Susan?
Thank you. The, the other races, I'll note, uh, Newcastle School Board, um, the nominees were Mike Forboda from the Republican Party and Marco Belisco from the Democratic Party. I'm unaware if, if either one of my colleagues or anybody in the room knows, um, if there were any nominations in the Plaski Township, there was a supervisor race where the parties were required to provide nominations.
I'm not aware.
Yeah.
Same with Wilmington Township.
Yes, yeah. And I want to say the Republican Party did nominate, um,
Mr. Zener?
Exactly.
I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but Zener?
I.
But I could be wrong.
I think I could be wrong there too. Um, I know they, they, I believe they appointed him, um, as the township and tell the special election yet.
Well, and again, I'll muddy the waters a little bit. Recently, and Nick, you might be able to help us, one of the borough council members in Elwood City Borough, uh, stepped aside. And I don't know if that gave the two political parties enough time.
They appointed somebody else for three months yesterday.
Well, that's right, because her term was going to expire at the end of the year anyway. That's right, that's right. Thank you. Oh, did you know who they appointed?
David Ovial.
David Ovial, not, not, uh?
Dave Ovial.
Brad is on the ballot to be in the fall and.
I wonder how Brad and David are related?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is Brad.
Oh, it's Brad Ovial? Okay. Okay. Thank you, that's good to know. I, did you know that? I didn't know that.
No.
Brad's a good fellow. Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome.
That's, that's mercifully all I have for today. Um, Loretta from Florida?
I have nothing.
There we go.
I've been to congratulate Dan again and.
Thank you.
And, uh, the interesting information that, that Morgan you provided. And I'm, I have nothing because I lost and I care.
You'll get them next week.
Ted.
Or two weeks later. Um, all right, we only have a couple resolutions on deck today, um, in addition to the amendment that we have to make. Um, but first on deck, we have, uh, Melissa with Treasurer's Office, uh, if you want to approach the bench. Uh, we've got a resolution for discussion and possible approval, um, to establish due dates uh, for the collection of, of 2022, uh, real estate, county real estate taxes. You have the floor. What, what do we have going on?
Uh, just the treasurer would like to establish the due dates for 2022 for the county real estate tax payments. Um, it's also includes the interim, spring and fall interim, uh, statements as well. So, and then sooner we have these approved with the resolutions, the sooner we start doing it.
No questions?
I, I do. Uh, please bear with me. Thank you for being here. Uh, just for this year, for 2021, may I clarify, and maybe you confirm this? In fact, Vanessa and I were talking about this the other day. The courthouse this year is closed on New Year's Eve Day, which is a Friday, the 31st, because the holiday falls on a Saturday. So I, I, I do want to note that for people who do wish to pay taxes at the end of the calendar year, the latest they can do that will be the 30th of, of December. Am I right?
Well, we also have the drop off box. They can mail them and we'll accept postmark.
Yes, okay.
And normally, we will still, that following business data, we are, and we will continue to collect because we're still processing that.
And that would be the third of, of, uh, January of 2022, which is a Monday.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, I got my calendar here. But I do want to note for people who would want to come in physically to pay the tax at your counter, we will not be open on Friday, December 31. But I appreciate your clarifying that there are those other means by which they can pass.
Yeah, we have the, the lock drop, drop off box that's located right before the entrance to the left of the entrance of the courthouse, or you can do accept postmark December 31st.
Thank you.
And they can pay online, right?
And they can pay online as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No, I think, I, I, pretty much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll make this resolution 2021 dash 219. And I will take, unless there's any further discussion, I will take a motion to approve resolution 2021 dash 219.
Send them.
Second. Your motion is second. Is there any further discussion here? Non-questional motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Level?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobble?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have Tracy with Domestic Relations, uh, for resolution discussion and possible approval um, to enter into agreement with Ruska Enterprises. Tracy, what do we have going on today? How you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good.
So this is a maintenance agreement for two of our cardex like tree rooms that house our, uh, dock fires. Um, we've actually had this co- a contract with them for many years. And this is, it did increase $153.
We'll have to put that into the budget.
For the first time since 2015.
No, it's not bad.
So.
No.
And they do all the maintenance on those machines.
Questions, comments? Make this resolution 2021 dash.
Two twenty.
Two twenty. I, I probably should have taken more attention to the last one. Um, and I'll take a motion to approve.
Send them.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion here? Non-questional motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Level?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobble?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Quick, easy, painless. Up next, we have resolution for discussion, um, possibly to enter into change order recommended by Taylor Engineering for the Stabbage Bike Trail project. Um, I'm just gonna read the thing. Where is the following change as hereby made in the contract documents? On the existing bridge, um, the two-by-six timber bridged rails were bolted, um, with steel plates which were welded towards steel railing posts. Some of the existing plates contain two holes, both timber rails, some have four holes. It was determined in the, in the field, um, that each connection plate should be made to have four holes, timber rails. So the decision was made better secure to timber rails, the steel connection plates, the connector, of all of the posts, and show up and drill the plates as required. So each connection plate had four holes. Contractor also, uh, had purchased additional galvanizing bolts, washers, and nuts to place additional holes which are now present. Um, and in turn, increased the, uh, the cost of bridge replacement, uh, by $695 for a total contractual amount of $40,445. Um, so to that, or, uh, in that effect, this is a resolution for a change order number one with jet excavating code for increase of $695 to be approved for 2021 Stabbage Bike Trail Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Um, questions, comments on the change order?
Am I correct that the, uh, funds utilized for this are Marcellus dollars?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yep. Um, we'll make that resolution 2021 dash 221.
By the way, I, speaking of the Stabbage Bike Trail, I was, uh, at a meeting in Pittsburgh about a week ago, last week. And, uh, about a year ago, I had taken down a stack of our tourist promotion agency, uh, brochures. And included in those brochures are a page devoted to the Stabbage Bike Trail. I had one of the gentlemen who lives in Pittsburgh say, wow, am I glad you gave me that brochure because I'm now coming up and riding on the Stabbage Bike Trail. And, uh, I said, well, good, I hope you're spending your money while you're up here too. But, uh, I, I thought I mentioned that since we were talking about the trail, which of course the county owns and maintains up to the state line. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. I'll take a motion to approve resolution 2021 dash 221.
Send them.
I apologize. The only reason I'm hesitating that there was, there were further, it's, there's further language on the back. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Um, any further discussion here? Non-questional motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Level?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobble?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Last one, resolution 20, or this is a fund transfer. Um, it's, it's moving out of, both in the pro bonitaries accounts, uh, a thousand bucks for materials and supplies for land and building rent. Um, and the reason for this is, is, uh, our land and building rental expenses are just a little bit higher than anticipated to carry out the year. Pro bonitaries, one of our two departments, um, which incurs the most expense for land and building rental. Second is the, uh, Restaurant Reporters Office. And so, um, our, our anticipation this year was that we'd be able to shred more documents, uh, and digitize more documents than we have. That hasn't taken place to be, to, to the effect, um, that we thought it would, but we're still way down relative to last year in the way we're paying out of that, out of that account.
Would this be, I assume, is it the lump of mine?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I'll, I'll just take a motion to approve that.
Send them.
Second. Your motion is second. Any further discussion here? Non-questional motion, all favorably signify by saying aye. Second, your motion is second, any further discussion here, non-questional motion, and favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All put the same sign, motion carries. This next one, like we mentioned earlier, this is the minimalist action that we're taking to amend our COVID policy. All of this is doing is updating it to the most recent CDC guidelines, just to ensure that our HR office has very clear direction on how to treat instances of COVID exposure, whether it be employee, or the child of an employee out of, out of Lawrence County. Questions, comments on this?
I just think it's, it's something that we will, I'm sure periodically have to adjust as, as time goes on. With the kids being back at school, every, every school district is, is handling things differently, and, and we have to be aware that we do have, you know, parents that work within our buildings, with the four, over four hundred employees that we have. So we have to, I say we have to reduce the stress level as much as we can and be as understanding as, as we can, and as we have to be, to, to get through the, the next couple of months or into next year till we you know, get to that point that it, it's not affecting the schools and/or places of employment as much as it is, so. Step in the right direction.
And, and as part of our discussion leading up to this, Loretta reminded me of the fact, because I said, well, I don't remember having this issue last September when school returned, but I was reminded that by and large, everything back then was virtual as far as how students were being taught. And so we're faced with some new challenges now, as it relates to the schools. Appreciate the solicitor's guidance on this. I know our HR director's been getting a lot of calls.
Yes.
And I think by doing, taking the action we're taking today, this will help both Karen King and Cindy Sparamazza at the Indian Human Resources Department, so, thank you both.
I'll take, we'll make this resolution twenty twenty-one dash two twenty-two. I'll take a motion to amend the agenda to allow for voting on Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two twenty-three.
Send them.
Second.
Your motion is second, is there any further discussion here, non-questional motion, and favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'll take a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two twenty-two.
Send them.
Second.
Your motion is second, is there any further discussion here, non-questional motion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Steel Vowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Vowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no ordinances on the table for induction, final action. The next commissioners' meeting will not be held on Tuesday, September twenty-one, it'll be held on the following Tuesday. Rationale being that Commissioner Vowell will be at a meeting of the PCOM, Workers Compensation Trust Fund Board, but PCOM's shorter.
I always get the two, I know what the two are, but I always, I can never remember what the one you know, you know, chair on. And, and where's that at, Bedford?
Monroe County.
Monroe County. And, and, and Loretta will be at the CCAP headquarters in Harrisburg.
Yes.
Attending to business of finances, there is, is the new treasurer. That means Joe and I will be moving down Fort, so don't be surprised if there's not a building here when you look at that.
There will be a prison board meeting on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at noon. Anything I'm missing? Any additional public comments? See, not, I learned this the other day, I was re, I, because I was curious about this, I was reading through Robert Tools. I'm not reading through Robert Tools, I was with a specific section. And if we get to the end of the agenda, and there are no additional business to be brought up before the board, I'm allowed just to adjourn the meeting. Because it doesn't take a motion, the only time it takes a motion in a second is if you aren't done with the, you aren't done with the agenda, you see? So I just found that to be an interesting. So is there any additional business?
Nope.
All right, I'll adjourn the meeting.
There we go. Saves us a little.
Yeah, ten seconds or so, very good.
Debbie, I've got the, the packet if you'd like it.